Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum tonight. This is the Monday, May 15th, 2017, regular meeting of the Edina School Board. Rick, could you please review the agenda for us?
Certainly will. Just again, remind the board of the meeting that we had on May 1st, where we took a look at some construction contracts. We also had some unrequested leaves. And then there was a variety of topics we discussed as we looked through the 2017-18 school year. May 15th, we'll be taking a look at and getting the board to approve the minutes. We do want to recognize our Destination Imagination team from Concord. We'll have any hearing from the audience at that time. Part of the consent agenda then is to go through the personnel recommendations. It's that time of the year where we have recommendations coming in a variety of positions, including our high school principal position. Andy Beaton will be formally approved by the board. Andy's already started his transition. He'll be joining us officially July 1. We've got food service management contract. That's with Chartwell. They have been our provider in the past and will continue as we move forward. We also have the Type A meal prices. We'll not have a change in our breakfast program, but we'll have a 10 cent increase in the lunch programs for the students. As we look at the Performance and Wellness Contract, this is a new contract that we're excited to bring into the school district. It's Twin City Orthopedics, and they are going to be supporting our students at the high school, both after school, before school, and during the day, on just how they can improve their performance and their wellness, both in the field classes and just as students. Our workers' compensation insurance will be with State Fund Mutual. We'll also be purchasing three buses. One new one and two will be slightly used, as they say. They're good, very good deals. It'll help support our transportation program going forward. We do have some calendar changes for 2017-18. These relate to changes at the high school for orientation, as well as some of the special testing that we have going on. We have revised census number for community education, which increases our numbers. We have seen growth in our school district, as well as the tuition contribution for the Alternative Learning Program. That's with Intermediate District 287. It's our partner district that we have, and it's just a different way of funding things. We have some trips going on. Orchestra is going to the Caribbean next year. The concert band is going to Branson, Missouri. And then we move into our reports and discussions, where we'll talk a little bit about some of the work going on in our reading instructional areas with reading and math, our elementary instructional areas, I should say. We will get a leadership update. We'll learn a little bit about some participation fees that we need to increase to meet our budget targets. We'll have some policy reviews under the action items. We're pleased to bring agreements, both with the Education Minnesota Edina, as well as the confidential employee staff. And then we'll move to an unrequested leave, which is part of the process that we need to go through again this year. We have some technology purchases, policy reviews, and that would conclude the overview of the agenda for tonight.
Great. Thank you very much. We have approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the April 17th regular meeting and the May 1st special meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the minutes of April 17th and May 1st, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. Motion carried. Next, we have recognition for Destination Imagination team.
So we would ask the Concord Destination Imagination team to come on up front, and we want to recognize them for their great learning, as well as their advisor, Chad Fauzlin. Come on right up here, take a look. Mr. Fauzlin, how long have you been working with this team, as far as this commitment to Destination Imagination?
They have been together for three years, since they were third graders.
And talk a little bit about the program itself. Some of us may not know a lot about it, but what it does and how challenging it is and what a great opportunity it is for these students.
So Destination Imagination is a global program. So there's people in China and Canada doing the same type of challenges, and it's a kind of engineering, problem-solving, creative thinking organization that fosters those kind of skills for young people, just kind of what all the jobs and employees are looking for right now. So this group has chosen to do the improv challenge all three years. So they do improv, on-the-spot thinking, teamwork together.
That's good. And the reason they're here is the success they had, which has really taken them to a global view. Why don't you talk a little bit about that successful competition?
Yeah, so we had our regional tournament, maybe like a month and a half ago, and they placed there, where they made it to state tournament last month. And they placed third place there and made it to the global finals, which we decided as a team, just with time restraints and costs, that we would just do a celebration here instead of going down to Tennessee. So we're very proud of them.
We are very proud of them, and we look at some great potential. I'm going to hand this mic right down the line. I need a first name, a last name, a grade level, and what you've liked best about being part of this team. You ready? Got it? Okay. First name, last name, grade, and what you like best about the team.
My name is Eli Simonson, and I'm in fifth grade. And I enjoyed just the fun with all of my friends within EDI.
My name's Katie Hagan. I'm in fifth grade. And what I liked best about EDI is that we all work together and share a lot of creativity.
My name is Ava Norling, and I'm in fifth grade, and I liked working together.
My name is Jaden Young, and I'm also in fifth grade, and I liked when I got to participate with the team and hang out with my friends.
My name is Lucia Everest. I'm in fifth grade, and I also really liked how we worked together as a team, and I got to see all of us grow over the three years of working together.
My name is Tate Gurney, and I like the thrill of going to tournaments, and I like winning them.
There we go. And Chad, I know we have something that we want them, they want to do with us, so I'm going to give-
Do you guys want to see a little bit of what they do?
What?
We don't know about this. Surprise to them.
No, no.
So will you pick, will you pick one of these two sheets of paper? And one of these two there? All right? So for this challenge, they had to-
Here you go, Chad.
They had to research different genres of television, books, and then practice using those different genres in their skits. And then they also practiced using different main characters. So I'm going to read a scenario, and then Mr. Dressen's going to read a genre and a main character, and they're going to have three minutes to plan and present to you all. So here we go. So their scenario is the main character's car breaks down, and apples on an apple tree start singing horribly. And the main character is?
A pilot.
A pilot. And in the genre of?
Fantasy.
Fantasy. All right. Team, are you ready? All right, your three minute starts now.
Okay, so Howard's car breaks down, and the, oh, I've got an idea. So the pilot's on his way to the airport, because he needs to, he needs to pilot something. And it's fantasy, so apples can sing.
I had an idea that the cars are like planes, like they fly up in the air, because they're a pilot, and it's fantasy. And like, yeah. And then like the apples, and there's tons of, like, they could notice, because the trees-
Oh, as they're passing the trees, the apple starts singing, because of the, like, gas that comes out of the car, because it's fantasy.
Right. Okay, so Eli, you're the pilot. Um, are we all agreeing on that?
I'll be like, I'll be the one.
Uh, what?
I'm going to be the back driver.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Who wants to be an apple?
I understand this totally.
So Eli, you're the pilot.
I'm not an apple.
We need, we need some, I'll be a passenger.
I'll be an apple.
Okay, okay. Me and Katie can be apples.
Yeah, we'll be passengers. Um, so beginning, he's piloting the plane. Middle-
He starts to notice these weird apples.
Singing, and, um-
At that end, dearly. It breaks down, it breaks down in the middle.
No, at that end, they start to notice the weird smell of gas.
And then they switch out the gas, and the apple stops singing. Okay, okay.
Eli, you're the pilot. We're, we're apple pilots.
I'll be the co-pilot. I'll be the co-pilot. Three, two, one. Gears aligned. All right, in our car plane, where are we taking these passengers to?
I don't really know.
What, what did you program into the GPS?
I don't know.
I'm an apple, singing.
Oh.
Twinkle, twinkle, little star. What is that? I'm going to roll down the window and see if I can hear it any louder.
I'm in the sky.
Do you smell that?
Yeah.
It smells so weird. Here, you, I'll go switch it.
Might be the apples.
Yeah, I'll go switch it.
I'm singing apple. An apple.
Why are the trees so twinkly?
Okay, I switched out the gas. It should fix the problem.
What do we do with these?
I'm an apple. Pick 'em! No, don't pick me! They're still talking. Uh, maybe we should just fly by them in our car. That is magical, in this fantasy-like world.
There it is, ladies and gentlemen. They made it. We need a picture, gang. Let's get a picture here. Let's get a picture with the board chair.
DI champions on three. Ready, one, two, three.
DI champions!
Thank you.
Thank you very much, team. That was great.
That was fun. Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is hearing from members of the audience. We do encourage members of the audience to come and speak. We limit their time to three minutes. We ask that they not bring any criticisms about individuals to the board, and we also do not typically respond at the meetings to the comments, but there is typically follow-up afterwards. Looks like we only have one speaker tonight, Gabe Aderhold. I think I got the pronunciation right this time. Welcome.
Thank you. I'll make it quick, just because I'm the only one. Gabe Aderhold. I was just here, I just wanted to comment about the Minnesota Legislature's passage of the Education Omnibus Bill from last week. One and a half percent increase per pupil. I've been concerned, because across the state, we're seeing massive budget cuts, when we have over $1 billion surplus in our state. And so I know this Saturday, the governor did veto this legislation, and they're encouraging advocates of public education to come out on Saturday. We're really hoping to get that 2% per pupil increase, so we don't have issues here in this district. One question I also had is included in this Education Omnibus Bill that was vetoed, was a provision which would prioritize open enrollment to students that live in EDINA but not in the school district. I am not quite sure about if that's been vetted, or if there's a racial equity impact statement on it. I'm not here to speak in favor or against. I just haven't heard anything about what the implications of that might be on our school district and enrollment and whatnot. So the two things I just wanted to say is I hope we can, can count on all of you to join us and fight for that 2% increase, and then also to get some answers on what that open enrollment policy, which I believe is fairly unprecedented, would, would impact in this district. Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, I'd ask Principal Bruce Lachter to come forward. We decided today that we're going to table the next-gen high school report, put it all together as a next-gen secondary report. So include the middle school as well as the high school, but also want to take the opportunity to let the board know and the community know some of the things that we working, that we are working on at the high school, as that moves into big-time action in the fall of 2017. And Bruce, if you just can give us a little bit of an overview of some of the major initiatives that'll be, that are displayed in this document, that'll be going out to families, but also to students and the community, and then talk a little bit about some of those major initiatives.
Certainly. Thank you so very much. This is a career's worth of dreams coming together, as we look forward to what lies ahead for Edina High School. When we look at what we're doing, how we're doing, and how it will be launched in the fall, the number one thing that we're looking at is the idea of community within our school. The idea of trying to make certain that students are connected and well-connected to mentors, to teachers, and that the transition will indeed be seamless coming from middle school. If you think about next year, 50% of our student body will be brand-new to the high school, and that poses a large challenge. But we have been working for the entire year on how to meet that challenge. We're launching programs such as the Edina Link Crew, which will serve as an advisory. We're looking at ways through which we can build mentorships for students, and we're looking at a different way of pulling off high school orientation. And we're going to connect students with students, and that is the best way to execute a seamless transition, and we're very excited about that. The other thing that we're working on a great deal is student leadership. One of the things that we tend to do in public schools is we talk about leadership, but we tend to do very little about it. So what we're trying to do is to continually create opportunities for leadership opportunities within our high school. We're building in opportunities with 212 that will continue, but also with Link Crew, we're involving almost 200 students that serve as advisors in that program, and we're very excited about that. Academically, we will continue to be a rigorous high school, a high school that expects a lot of students, and we're trying to frame that in a new context and framework. That new context and framework is around 21st century learning skills, and we have worked tirelessly on this, and I won't bore you. We have talked about this for two years, but I just wish to say thank you so very much. And Rick asked me to give you a, a very quick glimpse into a document that is coming out to our community very soon. So I thank you very much.
So, thank you, Bruce. So I just want to note that Bruce is retiring at the end of this school year. I have had the privilege of working at the high school for the last, I think, five years with you, Bruce, both on site council and PTO, and he does amazing work. So our high school would not be where it is without Bruce's efforts. And when I look at this brochure and I see the administrative team, although his name is not here, his imprint is everywhere on this document, and we owe a great thanks to you, Bruce, for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thanks, Bruce.
Next agenda item is the consent agenda. Do I have any requests to remove anything from the consent agenda? No? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Can I just, oh, I just had a question on it.
Okay. So you're saying something is missing from it, or?
Yes. Dr. Dressen, I mentioned that Andy Beaton is approved within the, in tonight's personnel recommendations, and I didn't see that when I reviewed the packet today. So I was wondering why that's not in there.
So we will double-check it. So obviously, we won't be taking action on Andy's today, but we'll make that correction and probably do it at the May 22nd meeting.
Okay.
May 22nd. May 22nd, we have a meeting. All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Next agenda item, so actually, we're going, before I get to the reports and discussion, we are tabling the next-generation Edina High School. Can I get a motion to table that to the next meeting? That's fine.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. So C is tabled. Now we're on to reports and discussion, and we have purchase of elementary classroom materials, reading.
I'm going to ask Randy Smalls to come up and bring his team along with him, as they go through both the reading and math curriculum at the elementary level. Welcome, everybody.
Good evening, Chair Wallen-Friedman, Superintendent Dressen, school board members, community members. We're very excited tonight to present to you Phase Two of our literacy adoption, and we have some great presenters here this evening, including Caroline Lyndon, who is our K-12 literacy and language arts specialist. We have Kelsey Wolf, who's one of our instructors at Normandale Elementary. And very special guest here, we have Ryan Vecchio.
Vecchio.
Vecchio, thank you, Ryan, who is one of our students from Normandale, talking a little bit about the impact of some of the literacy work and his experience in school. And the love of reading is an incredible gift for a learner, and reading abilities and skills are so foundational to the study of all disciplines in school. And tonight's presentation is really about the second phase of this K-5 literacy adoption, which includes the expansion of our classroom libraries. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Caroline Lyndon to talk about our process, the materials themselves, a little bit about our budget, and then as we work through it, we'll get to opportunity for questions from the board.
Thank you. I am here to outline some of the results, or some, a recommendation by the language arts design team, and that is Phase Two, which Randy mentioned, about adding to teachers' classroom libraries and also to media center collections. Phase One, this is actually our third year of implementation. Two years ago, teachers implemented a new set of writing materials. This year, teachers are implementing a new set of reading instructional materials. So now, this is Phase Two, which will be something that goes directly into students' hands each and every day, which are books for classroom libraries. And I got to click. There we go. Forgot that part. So Phase Two, there you go. There are many years of research that show that the amount of time children spend reading directly affects their reading achievement. And this can include books from the classroom library, from the media center, from the public library, from home. Books from all places can support students as readers. And a consistent component of the instructional materials that teachers are implementing this year is something called individualized daily reading. Students are given time built into their literacy block each and every day to self-select texts with teacher guidance, to read for, for pleasure, for fun, and also to help them get better as readers. I'd like to introduce or welcome again Kelsey Wolf and Ryan Vecchio. They're going to speak a little bit to the importance of classroom libraries and why they are important to them personally. Kelsey is a representative on the language arts design team, and I'd like to thank her for being here.
Thank you for having us. I work just downstairs, and I have, I have a, I have a pretty good classroom library, and, but there's always room for improvement. So many of the books that I think that we've culled over, that I've collected over the years, it's, have been from somewhat random sources, garage sales, my church's fundraiser, hand-me-downs from the public library, or from the Edina, or from the Normandale Library. And now that I, individualized daily reading is a part of our everyday life in the classroom, there was always reading before, but now it's really a fundamental part of our, of our reading instruction. It's really important that we have a good selection and collection of books that students can choose from to read. We have a variety of readers in the classroom, and so the, the books that we hope to purchase are, there's a, there's a variety of different reading levels. Many of the books are at level. Some of the books are above level, and then about 25% are below level. So there will be books that, that are accessible for all the students. They have been, they've been selectively chosen because they are high interest. Kids really enjoy them, and they also have a diversity of characters and also storylines. So when I, when I was asked to speak with Caroline and Randy, and was asked to bring along a student, I, there was one name that popped right into my head. That was Ryan, because Ryan loves to read, and he also loves to talk, especially to adults. Right, Ryan?
Yep.
Yes, he does. So Ryan is going to talk to you. He's been studying, he's been studying opinion writing as part of his writing unit, and so he has developed, he's, he's come up with a few reasons why he thinks that we should purchase additional books for the classroom libraries in Edina.
So I think that over time, books fall into disrepair, and when I was reading a 2014 Book of World Records, it was hard to read because pages were falling out everywhere. Number two, we need updated books, especially nonfiction. I know that me and a lot of my friends like to read nonfiction books, and it's a lot harder to understand and get the right information when you have not updated books. Number three, I personally love books and think that it is important for classes to have better classroom libraries. So, yeah, that's important in my book. Number four, teachers need books that kids want. Sometimes teachers get a book thinking that the kids are going to like it, and then the kids don't like it. And I hope that with the money, we would be able to get books that the kids actually want, so there would be better classroom libraries. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. I should just be done now. Thank you for speaking so eloquently. Thank you also, Madam, Ms. Wolf. I'll present a few more, some more information, a little bit about the process, and a little more about the collections themselves, next. So robust classroom libraries support student success academically, along with those global competencies that we know are so important. It helps students see themselves in books. It helps them have windows onto other kinds of worlds and people. And so we know also that it increases all of the things that you see on the screen. There are some recommendations, some basic recommendations about what a classroom library should look like or contain. We weren't able, budget-wise, to provide 300 to 600 books per teacher, and as Kelsey mentioned, a lot of teachers have starts of classroom libraries. But to ensure that every single classroom in Edina Public Schools at the elementary level have books that kids want to read, we wanted to make an investment and get kid, and get teachers started on that. Kelsey also alluded to some of the items that are under the recommendations. Those, along with some others, are what Ellie will speak about next, which is the criteria that the committee used to make their recommendation about which collections to be purchased. So in addition to some of the things on the previous slide, teachers wanted them to be authentic books. This means not necessarily instructional books that are just sort of repackaged and labeled as classroom library books. They also wanted them to not be necessarily a publisher-created book, but to be real trade books, books that kids could find at Barnes &amp; Noble, books that kids can find on Amazon. Sometimes publishers will just sort of repackage their instructional materials and use them for a different purpose. The teachers on the committee really wanted trade books. In addition, Kelsey said one of the other things they looked for was a range of difficulty levels. So we know that not all students fall within a grade-level range as readers, and so there are 25% of the collection that reaches above grade level, which is one to one and a half grades above. 50% of the books are on grade level, and then 25% are below. We also know that that won't even reach all of our readers, and so students then are encouraged to use the media centers and library, and so we're also asking for some additional money for beefing up those media center collections. We also always want to recommend that students use the public library as well. The collections are, were very well-vetted. Something that was important to the teachers on the committee was that we knew why the books were selected, and how they were selected, and who selected the books to create the collections that we are putting into teachers' classrooms. And so the Center for the Collaborative Classroom, which also happens to be the publisher of the reading materials, were the collections that met the criteria, along with budget. I'll speak a little bit more about some of those next. So just a quick visual there. So in each collection, there's 120 books that teachers would get. The average cost is there, and then media centers would also be getting some money for them to select to support daily reading for students. The collections were selected by a combination of media specialists and teachers. They reviewed 3,000 titles from 180 publishers over a four-year timeframe to come up with these lists or these collections of texts. So that's kind of a sample. So some of the books, they're also very, there was a multicultural lens that was looked at. So we've got some nonfiction books. We've got some books that are about global places, different places around the world. We have your old, or your, your series books for kids who like those. We have books like Because of Winn-Dixie in some of the collections. Those classics are those books that we know all kids should read. We also have lots of high-interest topics and themes that kids can select from. And I know at the board's subcommittee meeting, some of you were able to look at some of those collections of books as well in more detail. So as I mentioned, there's a range of difficulty within every text. There's a variety. It was balanced for gender, culture, genre. There's both fiction and nonfiction in every collection. 41% of the books in the CCC suite of materials are about people of color, and there's an even split among male and female main characters, which are consistently represented as three-dimensional. So the, they aren't just there. They're actually quality characters who are, don't reinforce those familiar stereotypes. Criteria for leveling the books was a variety of things as well, which was appealing to the committee. Lexiles were looked at, Fountains and L text gradient guided reading levels were looked at, in addition to journal reviews, classroom experiences, and actual student responses. So there was some student voice involved in the creation of these collections. Whoops, did I skip one? Nope, I didn't turn the page. So here's some pictures that I took, actually, as I was visiting with teachers around the district. These are some of the existing classroom libraries that teachers already have. These are teachers on the design team, actually. And so as you can see, teachers already know the importance of a robust classroom library. They have created them, themselves, from a variety of sources, hand-me-downs, responses. So there was some student voice involved in the creation of these collections. Whoops, did I skip one? Nope, I didn't turn the page. So here's the pictures that I took actually as I was visiting with teachers around the district. These are some of the existing classroom libraries that teachers already have. These are teachers on the design team, actually. And so as you can see, teachers already know the importance of a robust classroom library. They have created them themselves from a variety of sources, hand-me-downs, discarded books, those kinds of things. But as Ryan succinctly put it, we also need some, an infusion of some of those new, high-interest, appealing books that kids want to continue reading to give a little boost to all of those classroom libraries. So thank you for considering helping teachers continue to build their libraries and ensure all teachers have one utilizing the same rigorous criteria that the design team looked at. That's all I have. Thank you.
The Teaching and Learning Committee did quite an extensive review of this information at the committee meeting earlier, or in April, I should say. But any questions at this time?
We had a chance to actually look at a wide sample of books that Caroline brought in that were, it was just great to see the variety of books that these kids will have. And then also, we did ask, talk a little bit about the books that you do have in your classrooms, the collections that you've put together, outside of those that, you know, are falling apart, will continue to be there, but another addition to help enhance those. So thank you for sharing those with us.
Just thank all of you, and Ryan in particular. Thank you. You present very well.
Thank you.
And I agree with all of the reasons that you've presented as to why we need the books. And I want to thank Kelsey and Randy and Caroline for yours and your committee's time in vetting the books. It's an impressive collection, and it aligns so well with everything that we've been talking about for learning. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just thanking Kelsey and the design team, because so much of this work is really grassroots with the teachers, and having a design team of teachers that are really doing this literacy adoption and reviewing all these materials, and helped with the Phase One last year, just a very public thank you to Kelsey and the design team, and again, to Caroline for her great leadership in helping to move literacy in Edina Public Schools. It's awesome work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is purchase of elementary classroom materials math. Randy, I think you're staying up here, and then you've got a different team?
A new team.
Chairs?
Same number of chairs.
So which one is the student?
Videos.
We have videos, okay.
We are on to another foundational area, very exciting for the work happening in literacy and reading, but equally excited for the work that's happening around K-5 Math. We have Andy Loger here. Andy is our K-12 mathematics specialist, who joined us a little over a year ago, and has done some impressive work with leading the K-5 Math adoption. We have Fred Hagerty here, who works over at Creek Valley and teaches advanced academics and mathematics there, and Julie Baker, who's grades three and four at Highlands Elementary. So very excited that they were able to join us tonight and kind of really speak to process and to a little bit of the background about why we're selecting what we're recommending to select. We've had the same curriculum for about 20 years, Everyday Mathematics. And we did have a most, our most recent update, I think, was about 12 years ago. But we've been in this same curriculum for quite some time. We are deviating from that with our recommendation this evening. And part of that is the future of Edina is really looking at those future-ready skills. Sometimes people call them 21st century skills, but it seems odd, 17 years into the century, to keep calling them that. But basically, how we instruct math can really aid in the development of those skills. And math is really exercise for the brain. It's an opportunity to develop critical thinking and problem-solving skills. And the problems posed in mathematics are great at growing the brain's ability to think critically. And so that becomes foundational to the sciences, to many, many disciplines, and even to the arts. And so mathematics, again, is just such a critical foundation of Edina Public Schools' experience, and we're very excited to bring this recommendation to you this evening. So with that, I will turn it over to Andy to talk a little bit about process and the materials themselves.
Thank you. I'm excited to be here as well, and the work this design team has done. Both Fred and Julie are members of that design team. This process started last spring. A committee was formed. We had representatives from all six elementary buildings, all grade levels, advanced academics, and a special ed representative in the spring kind of come together and start forming the vision of where we wanted Edina Math to go, K-5 and even K-12. And we developed criteria based on standards and best practices in math instruction. We focused this presentation on the five elementaries. Normandale is looking at something similar, but it's a French component. And so we're kind of putting that on the table for a year, so we can do a little more exploring and investing in the classroom around what it looks like from the French component of it. We looked at several sample materials based on our criteria. We kind of had four vendors in the fall come and present to us, including current Everyday Mathematics to compare to what we've been doing. We, the committee decided to look at Bridges for the Math Learning Center and Math in Focus, which is a Singapore-based program by Marshall Cavendish, in the classrooms. And so this winter and spring, we've been exploring both curriculums in the classroom. From that, we have kind of decided upon, or the design team recommended, and came to a very strong consensus to recommend Math in Focus as the next K-5 curriculum for Edina. There are several area schools using this curriculum currently. We've been in contact with them: Blake, Brex, St. Paul Academy, Minnehaha Academy, Minnetaka is using it as a supplement. There are other districts who are using the strategies that are called Singapore-based strategies that come with this curriculum to supplement their current curriculum. So we feel like it has a lot of kind of power behind it. Kind of what Randy alluded to, our current materials are copyright 2005, and our Minnesota standards are from 2007. So they are misaligned. There are some holes. Our current math scores have kind of plateaued. They're pretty high, but they're still plateauing. And so we wanted to look at a curriculum that aligned to kind of the strategic plan and the three big goals of what, where our district is going. And Math in Focus kind of aligned great with all of those. What comes with Math in Focus are, again, teacher resources, student textbooks and workbooks, K-5, digital resources. We have it in our contract for eight years of using their digital resources. And then manipulatives, and these are beyond, we've brought some of the manipulatives. These are beyond what we typically have. I mean, we still have number cubes, we have base 10 blocks. But Math in Focus goes a step further. They really focus on place-value chips and number strips, and the kids are really acting and doing it all the way through fifth grade. They're manipulating and using the foundation of, to really understand the what. They're using fraction circles. You know, it just goes a lot deeper than what we currently have with our students.
So Julie, are they still going to be doing lattice math?
No, no, they will not be doing lattice math.
I'll speak to the tricks.
So I'm going to let Fred and Julie do some explaining about, more about Math in Focus.
All right. I'm going to start by talking a little bit about the difference between Math in Focus, which is actually the Singapore curriculum that's used in Singapore. Marshall Cavendish is the producer of the curriculum for the Department of Ministry in Singapore. So it is actually there, it's actually the Singapore curriculum.
Really?
Yep. It made some changes. Holtland Mifflin is simply the vendor. They're the exclusive sole vendor of the product, but it's really Marshall Cavendish. And we've had some great conversations directly with Marshall Cavendish on their product and the nuances of the two, between the two of them. Marshall Cavendish's product is what we call a mastery-based product. In other words, the kids will learn to master a topic or a particular area, and then move on to the next area. It's not like master and then forget. It's master and use. So in future lessons, they're expected then to use that. So they continue to get practice on using it. It's not continually re-taught. Unlike a spiral curriculum like Everyday Math, which was designed to reach districts to make sure kids had a minimum level of competency, so it's highly repetitive. So the kids come back around, and around, and around. And as a consequence, we find a lot of teachers have to supplement that because it gets repetitive, and for our kids, and boring, and easily gets out of alignment. We felt that the mastery-based curriculum got the kids much deeper into math. Also, this particular curriculum uses the correct terminology. Instead of using things like turnaround rule, they call it exactly what it is, community property and multiplication addition, which we also thought got them thinking deeper as far as not just the topic itself, but the vocabulary. So as we looked at the two curriculums, we, it really came out that the mastery concept and what you do with it enables kids to go much deeper into math and have a much stronger math understanding.
I would have to say, like, the biggest change that I've seen, that I saw, and I'll speak to more later, was this, the power standards. When my kids approached the MCAs the last two years, I've been piloting, had the benefit of piloting for two years. My kids went through about 25 pieces of paper. And so if you think about all the teachers that spend all this time saying, "Show your work, show your work, show your work," these kids now have a totally new mathematical mindset. They are proud to show their work. They're proud to work it out in multiple ways. And it was very much reflected in my MCAs this year.
Now, Math in Focus, it's designed to start with the concrete. So it starts with a concrete concept, and then it builds through pictorial. So they learn different ways of doing it into the abstract. So it has a very strong abstract piece of it. So it really gets to that critical thinking piece of it. And that was another thing that we found that, and as we piloted it, like with our elementary school, we had the fourth grade and the fifth grade teachers pilot it, they didn't want to go back. The kids didn't want to go back. They were so excited about it that actually they called Andy and said, "Hey, we don't want to quit." The kids are having, they're just learning so much, and they're having such a great time with it. So it really increased student engagement significantly as compared to what we were doing with Everyday Math.
I would say, too, the foundational skills, it goes so much deeper. So we kind of are catching those kids who are memorizers, so that kind of get away and then get caught up even in middle school and secondary math, and they've been memorized. These are, because it's so grounded and concrete and pictorial, before you jump to the abstract, they're really having an understanding of what they're doing and why they're doing it. It's kind of the why before the how. And we felt this curriculum, too, supports kind of a spectrum of readiness. It has a lot of opportunities for kids at any readiness level to enter into the curriculum wherever they are. There's high-algebraic thinking, but kids can enter that in, in a pictorial concept, and still have the same conversation in a different way than a student who's ready to go straight to that abstract algebra thinking. As mentioned earlier, we felt this curriculum also kind of hit the competencies and the strategic plan that the district has set forth. It definitely is culturally responsive in terms of the different pedagogy that goes with it. There's low-floor, high-ceiling questions, again, that, again, allows every student to access, no matter where they're entering the problem. And we'll show an example of that a little bit later. There's a lot of creative thinking and problem-solving. There's collaboration, a lot of innovative thinking. You're asking kids to solve problems in multiple different ways, not just the same algorithm maybe we learned growing up, so which relates to a lot of it. We're kind of increasing their critical thinking, their collaboration. Again, the engagement piece has been huge. We felt like this curriculum, too, aligned well with personalized learning. It allows for flexibly using pacing, entry points, scaffolding up or down, just a lot. Because it was mastery-based, we just felt like teachers had a lot of flexibility on how to have their students work through things. And I think Fred has a little bit more to kind of say what he's done with his kids at that.
Yeah. So the nice thing about the mastery is, with Spiral, you always have to come back, and come back, and come back. With the mastery, and they master and then move on and use it, is that you can adjust the pace, and they get more, they get more content, more material. Like with our group, we, and actually, the fourth grade and fifth grade teams did the same thing. We were able to have, to break them into, and they could kind of go at their own pace that fit their needs. We had some kids that, you know, shot ahead, and you could break them into small groups and customize it based on what their needs are. Unlike with Everyday Math, you'd have to bring them back and do a reteach, and kind of that repetitive motions that you had to go through. The culturally responsiveness, we asked Marshall Cavendish about that, because that was a big question that several teachers had. They pointed out that that was a requirement by the Department of Ministry, that it had to be culturally neutral, because Singapore has six major groups in their small country that they have to teach to. And that was a huge concern, plus all the minority groups that they have, that they have to be able to reach all those kids. And so their curriculum was designed so that teachers could use whatever pedagogy strategies that they needed without being encumbered by the curriculum. So culturally responsiveness was a piece that they contemplated and intentionally addressed as part of the curriculum development.
So we're going to spend the next few slides talking about what can students expect, what can teachers expect, and what can parents expect. And we have some videos, and I know audio's a little not working well today for technical reasons, so I'll try to narrate some, or have the microphone up close, so I apologize for that. But students, again, like we said, here's a picture, these are kindergartners working, this is their workbook they're working in, at this point, over in Concord. There's kindergartners at Concord. But again, it's the manipulative piece. I think every lesson has two out of the three components between concrete, pictorial, and abstract. And so they're constantly engaged in some way in the math that's happening. We have a first grader who was interviewed, who got to use Math in Focus in the classroom this year, and so his teacher interviewed him, and this is kind of what he had to say.
Hey, Michael, what is your favorite part about doing Math in Focus this year?
So he's asked what his favorite part of doing Math in Focus is this year, and he's showing his workbook and its number bonds. That's a pictorial representation that starts in kindergarten and goes all the way through grade five at different levels, and how to break apart numbers and have that strong number sense. Again, from anywhere from, he's using seven and four, or seven, or four and three makes seven, all the way, you can do it with money, fractions, decimals, and so it's a strategy that goes for. And then his teacher asks him, why does he want to continue using Math in Focus? And he says, it stretches his brain. And so he really wanted to keep using it. So I apologize for the sound there.
So what the students are going to experience in an intermediate classroom is that they're going to have a stronger focus on number sense. So every unit, first grade through fifth grade, starts with number sense. So you really ground them in, where is a number in relationship to other numbers? And how do you break it apart? So the number bonds that Andy referred to, we use fraction sticks. How do you pull something apart and break it apart? Because we're switching from just kids thinking one, two, three, to a base-10 model. It's always as, how do you make it 10? How do you get to 100? How do you get to 1,000? Which is how the global world does think. They don't use a customary system like us. And so it's really building this global mindset of where are you in the world, and how do you pull this apart? I love the part that the students will experience, that they have to show the teacher or their partner the way that they solve the problem. And they have to be able to talk math and explain math to them. And I think you'll see, if you want to put up my video. And my audio might not be working. This is a short clip. So here, the kids designed a game, and we were working on decimal numbers. And so the kids had to come up with nine decimal numbers. And it's a fast game. They have to put theirs in order as fast as they can, and then they run to somebody else's, mix them up, then they run to somebody else's and do that. And so it's, again, it's that number sense. It's that problem, which is a Minnesota state standard that is not covered in our current Everyday Math curriculum. And I love, as Sarah pointed off, there's a lot less tricks. There's no lattice math. It's, there's not remembering the rhyme to division anymore. It's, the kids are just really grounded in base-10. When my kids look at a division problem, 689 divided by seven, they say, "How many times can seven, can my 600 be divided into seven parts?" So they're always talking in that base-10, and it's not like, "How many times does seven go into six?" Well, it's not going into six. It's going into 600. And so you change their complete mathematical mindset. The other part to the Math in Focus is that their method is the right method for them at that time. And so it really personalizes the learning. We acknowledge, we appreciate, and we teach others the way that that person is thinking. And eventually, as they move K through five, we do move them to more efficient methods. But each kid, at every moment, is always in the right place, because it's their place. And that's, it's great, because it's not my method's the one method. It's your method is the right method for you right now. And it's also, I know we don't have a parent slide, but it was a big re-edification for parents, too. So we will experience that.
In terms of what teachers can expect, this is a pedagogical shift from what we've been doing, and we've what we've been doing. And we've been out in schools consistently throughout this year, kind of sharing with what, what the work the design committee's been doing. The members of the design committee have been talking with their peers in, in the schools and with administrators about how this is a shift in how we teach. And, you know, again, primary, you're going, this, it kind of is like a ramp up from K5. It gets pretty rigorous by fifth grade. But there's such foundational pieces that happen in the K1, 2, that it's very supported by you times you get to, to grades three, four, or five. And so, again, it's a transition, but it's one that we think our teachers are ready for and are excited about having.
And I agree 100%. I think the teachers are ready for it. They want it. And there's definitely an increase in the rigor that we provide for all students across the board. And included in the Math in Focus curriculum package, if we move forward with it, is, material is provided at four different levels. So the workbook that you see in front of you, that's, that's your basic practitioner level. There's a reteach book. There's an extra practice, so it's the kid that's going to that next stage. And then there's also an enrichment curriculum provided that parallels everything. And kids move fluidly and flexibly through both, all four curriculums wherever they are at each point in time. So it's, it's great for the kids.
And I think we've addressed several of the other elements on this slide. So with interest of time, we're going to kind of move forward with that. And in terms of what parents can expect, because this is a shift, we want to provide and build a parent resource page. That's something the design committee is committed to doing next year during their work with this transitional year. Homework's different. You know, now with everyday math, there's a home link that comes home every day. That's not the case with Math in Focus. There may be some homework. There may not be. It's really up to your kids' teachers. And so one thing we want to provide is, a lot of questions, "How can I help my child?" So what can you do if they don't bring homework home? Resources for that. And then if they do, having videos or resources on why they're doing things the way they are, whether it's with bar modeling or number bonds, and having a better understanding. Our plan is to have some parent information nights around this and have them actually doing lessons and doing what their kids are doing at the different levels to experience kind of the, the thought behind the process. The other piece, too, we want to make sure that this aligns to what secondary is. Secondary is a little further behind in terms of their process in looking, reviewing materials. However, the K5 and the 612 design teams developed their mission statement separately, but they are almost identical, which says something about, I think, the direction we want to go as a program. We've even had some opportunities to get together K12 and have had really good discussions about mitigating transition between the two, three levels and how that can help. Again, this aligns with the, the direction the 612 design team wants to go, even though they're not ready to purchase a curriculum or, or request a curriculum yet. We do also plan on including the pre-K teachers in with some training so that they know where kids are going in kindergarten, as well as having grade six teachers figure out what's happening in fifth grade, especially a couple of years down the road when these kids have come through the system all the way through K5 and, and are coming to sixth grade with a lot more rigorous experience. We have a two-phase implementation plan. Because this is such a shift, you know, we had made, the, the elementary principals had wanted to wait a year. Our elementary staff has been inundated with new curriculum and a lot of changes. And so we felt like going head into it next year was not going to be a success for our teachers. So at the same time, we have teachers who are using it this year that don't want to give it up. And so we want to use next year as kind of creating implementation specialists in every building on a voluntary basis. They would have, receive materials and professional development and be using their curriculum with their students in the class. We'd have digital access across the buildings for all K5 math materials. Normandale would also spend next year actually reviewing the Singapore-based program in French in classrooms at primary and intermediate levels. So we're already in process of getting that in place for next year. Phase two would be the following year, and that would be the remainder of the K5 staff at the five schools, and then adding Normandale into the French component. And then the remainder of materials and professional development for those. With that, are there any questions for us? It's a lot of information in a short time.
We, we talked about this in teaching learning as well, and it's a long time coming. I think everyone is excited about the new curriculum. I just had a quick question. So next year, it's not that any one school is going to be all moving into this yet. It's going to be phased in over, I'm just trying, just so parents know what to expect.
So right now, the teachers who are using in the classroom this year have options to become implementation specialist. So we want to make sure we have a variety K5 across every building. And so opening it up to more than just the limited people who are using on the committee to receive training and kind of move forward, and then really have kind of an implementation, like they're the ones who are providing feedback, what's, what's going to work, what's not going to work, how does this look at each grade level, and then kind of moving forward.
We do have a few sites that do have a large number of folks that were involved with piloting and want to continue to grow in that implementation. And so I think we really do have an opportunity to learn from the, the people that go through the first phase of this as implementation specialists. And then that is going to create greater capacity across those sites.
So you talked about different methods, and, you know, the way that our current math structure is showing them, you know, this is, this is the method you're going to use. Talk to me more about, you're saying the right method at the right time for them. And then are you just opening up all possible methods? Share a little bit about that.
As they go through the K5 journey, we begin with a number bond. So if a kid breaks, if the kid gets the number 20, some kids are going to see it as 15 and 5, and some kids see it as 13 and 7. So right there, you begin this process of, that's another way to make 20. And when we do division, some kids do pictures and groups. Some kids have a method that they learned at Kumon Math, and so you accept that method and have them try to talk you through it. And then the other way we do it is we use those place values. And then kids learn to draw pictures that match that. And so really what they're doing is they're dividing, but they're using a pictorial approach. And then we, then I will eventually label it for them, and I'll say, "Oh, you had 600s, and now we're breaking apart." And then I'll show them the concrete way, which we call the traditional, our parents call a traditional way of doing it. And so we're leading them towards the most efficient method, but we're not labeling it traditional anymore. We're taking them through, as Andy and Fred explained, like the picture first, then the concrete, and then they can understand that abstract algorithm, thank you, the trick of putting, why you put the zero there, things that we just had to memorize, bring it down, those things that we all had to memorize. They now understand what that really, really means, because they've had this whole time of somebody accepting their ideas and showing it to them, and then labeling it, moving it towards concrete. So.
And you said you've seen improvement in your MCAs in your own class? Because I know you've been at Highlands for a long time.
Yes, 22 years, yeah. 22 wonderful years. Yeah, I mean, it is, it is utterly amazing how much paper my kids go through now. And they grab a whiteboard now, and they're, "Can I show you my method?" That's the video that we would have shown, too, is, "Can I show you, can you show me, can I show you my method? I, I did it a different way." And there's a general acceptance from the students of, "I did that way." You know, raw data, very, very good. So out of my 26 kids, most of them exceed it. And that includes my kids that were in intervention a year ago.
Really?
Yeah. It was, it's pretty, if you asked our intervention teachers, it's pretty phenomenal, because I was, intervention has been doing this for a couple of years. We were now speaking the same language.
Excellent.
And that makes a huge difference for kids.
Yeah.
So are we making sure that kids who have used the program this year are in a classroom that uses it next year?
Yeah, that's under consideration. So for example, at Highlands, these kids in fourth grade have had it all year. And so that, we're going to have the fifth grade teachers using it next year because, and they're going to receive training before school starts, because that was something that we didn't want to give up. We don't want them to go backwards in that case.
Right. Great. Any other questions?
As far as access to digital content, what's included, and does that make sense, sort of looking out 10 years? And, yeah, let's go there first.
Okay. There's, the textbook's digital. There's that piece, too. Both students and teacher additions are. But beyond that, there's manipulatives online that they're using. There's games online. There can even be, there's.
Teachers teaching the methodology.
There's videos online to show, for teachers and for students on how to use things, and for parents on how to use it, the different methods that go along with it. There's, the whole program, it's a thing called Think Central through HM. And so there's even ability to have you, teachers load classes in there if they want to go through that, or it can sync to SchoolAgree. It can work together with that platform.
Great. And then long-term costs? Are there additional supplies? It seems, appears to be, and are those things we have to buy through them, or can we just make our own? How's that work?
So there are yearly workbooks, consumables every year. But we have yet to find a curriculum that didn't have that K5, so I'll be honest about that. They do come in digital, they are PDFs digitized. Again, that's part of the online pieces. They reteach enrichment, extensions, extra practice, assessments, and then their daily workbooks are all, are all digital. So it can be, either we're purchasing the student workbook, or we're going to be printing the, some of the resources.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great job.
As always. I just want to, again, thank our design team members, Julie and Fred, and all of our other teachers who participated in it. Again, having a design team of teachers facilitated with content specialists is a great strategy, I think, for the grassroots effort of really identifying through the skill set of those that are closest to the students, what is out there, what does, how does it align to best practice and evidence practice, so that we get the best materials possible. This is within our budget as we strategically map out our curricular materials adoptions over a seven-year cycle. And so we plan for these types of adoptions. And so it's kind of factored in. So thank you very much tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for your leadership.
Yes. Get your manipulatives back.
Kids will die.
These were, I love the sticks, this, these ones. Yeah.
Next is leadership update.
I will just again fly over, because this is the perfect example of a situation where when we look at that elementary curriculum, how math, we were just going to say, we don't know if we have the capacity to do it right. And we just have teachers and we have leaders who are making it available to say, we have the passion to do it right. And so while we championed on a new reading and writing curriculum over the past two years, this math is going to roll in as well. And that just speaks to the commitment our staff and our district office, Teaching and Learning Department have to really staying focused on the kids. We're also very excited about early education and advancements going there. If you can recall, back in 2016, when we were really taking a look at how this early ed was going to work with early ed, early, early ed, early education, the whole program with the Family Education Center coming with the early ed, special ed, those two programs coming together. We're going to talk about it later in the meeting tonight, where the agreement really brings the staff together. The staff has been working all year long in this togetherness effort around training. And now the programs have been brought together. So all these bullets that we talk about, they're really, the life is just really amazing how this is coming together. We also have a lot of discussions going on right now with our preschool program and our kindergarten program. So our desire to really make this a seamless change, that's really starting to evolve in a very, very strong way. And you heard it again tonight, where the curriculum now is being considered in the early childhood program as well as our K5 program. The middle school continues to make great progress in their work. A lot of their foundation and framing is in the philosophy. And once we get the philosophy and we get some of those standards in place, how they're going to continue to support those students, and then how are they going to create their new culture as a 6800 school? And they've been working hard over the past months as staff around that work. As they know, they're going to also be in the time of construction. So how do they work through those areas? At the high school, again, Bruce shared a little bit about that. It's going, the document is going to be going public and doing a lot more sharing with students and staff for the upcoming months. We're close to finalizing the new schedule and making those assignments finalized. So all those puzzle pieces are moving forward. Again, a lot of work's happening around how we're going to make sure we have a smooth transition for both our ninth and 10th graders, as well as supporting our 11th and 12th graders in this new learning environment. District-wide, all these, again, those initiatives that we laid out, and for the board, if you recall, we were talking about this in January and February of 2016, I should say. We really framed, this is the things we wanted to get done. And it was quite an aggressive plan, but thanks to the leadership of a team sitting right over there, and our staff and our community pulled together, all these major initiatives are falling in place, and we will hit all these targets come June 30th, 2017. And that is just amazing, and it's going to be great things for our young people. As it relates to construction, we're making great progress. The weather's been very favorable. So all of our projects are on schedule. We continue to have very favorable bid packages as well. We're 80% bid out. And again, our, from a funding standpoint, we are on target to have those funds draw us right onto the end of the project, which we know will take us into 2018. So both from a construction standpoint, we're in very good shape. We've had some very strong progress at the high school. So that, that's exciting. And then as from a funding standpoint, again, we stay in a very good position. It's a busy month right now, because we're doing something that we're not aware of many school districts doing, or we know the value of having furniture that fits for kids. And so we're bringing in that new furniture. So we have a master plan. We're taking furniture that is no longer functional and no longer going to meet those needs of our students. We're going to be pulling that and either auctioning that off or recycling it. But we have a master plan with the packings going on. We have great cooperation from our staff, and especially our custodian group. But that's going to be happening over the summer months. Some of the signage now is starting to come up at the high school, as we start seeing some of those outside finishes actually occurring. And again, all of our detail is aligning back to the 2003 construction. This is the central entrance into the high school, looking back out into the entryway. And you can see how that's closing in, where we're into the finishing, where they're actually putting the ceiling tiles in. They're getting positioned to do the painting. So a lot of that work is, is very efficient. This is some of the new classroom space. Again, you can see it's much wider, and it's got good space, good breakout space. But we're also at a point now where we're ready to put in carpeting and doing, and moving into the final painting stages. So some of our new construction, we're in very strong shape. But where we're going to be moving very rapidly is, once the school doors close, that's when we're going to go into the high school especially and start taking down walls, making adjustments, so that we really have the entire school as much as possible, as much as we can afford, make those adjustments, so they're really aligned to how our students want to be engaged in their learning process. Natural light's a big part of our world, and so we do have a variety of different venues that are creating natural light into the school. All these are very energy efficient and are well progressed. This is an outside, this is a lobby picture from our activity center. Here's a shot of the walking track, the above-ground walking track, which is part of that three gym staging. But that walking track is in, this will have a, obviously a soft cover finish. But again, will be a great asset for not only our students, but our entire community. This is a picture looking back at the high school from the very corner where our turf is being laid on the lower lot. So this is a very east, eastern corner of our lot. And if you would go out there today, you would see green turf being laid. So we expect the turf, the initial turf laydown will be finished in May, and then we'll start doing the infill. But we are going to see some strong progress on that. And you can see how we're also tied out on the very north side of the building, so that we really have completed our outside construction at the high school, and now really focusing on the inside. Cornelia has a lot of things going on. This is the bus garage. And we are closing in on a lot of that work there. There's some to be paving on that and doing some finish work. But we expect the bus, new transportation building to be completed in July and August. So we'll be in very good shape for that movement going forward. So a lot of the finished product is being, going work, being, the work is being completed. We'll soon be producing a new video for our, for our community to take a look at. It's just that we can't get our community into these sites because of the construction and the amount of labor that is going on. So we're going to try to do as much as we can through picture and through video. The board is going to have an opportunity to tour this later in May. And so the board will get a little bit more closer look at the work we're doing. But again, a big thanks goes to our community for their support of this project and the impact that it will have on learners for years to come.
And that concludes that report. Mr. Chair.
Any questions on leadership update? Otherwise, we are moving to participation fees for 2017-18. Margot?
So we are moving forward with some recommendations that came to the finance committee, as well as the Student Advisory Activity Council. These were targets set by the budget reduction and reallocation revenue generation process. So we did seek some funding support out of our activities program. And so after quite a bit of study, we did have some recommendations that went to the finance committee for approval. And Margot, I'll just let you kind of hit And Margot, I'll just let you kind of hit on the high spot.
Yes, and Troy Stein did the majority of the research in, in working with the students' activities and advisory committee. And he wasn't able to be here tonight, but we did have a lengthy discussion at finance committee with comparable data from the late conference districts, both for athletics and the activities. Also, part of the consideration too is ninth grade moving to the high school. And some activities that ninth graders are currently in at the middle school, but now will be at the high school. So it was, it was a good time to take a look. We had the budget advisory task force recommendations, but also knowing that, again, ninth grade is moving to the high school. And so there were several options developed for the fee increases. And the recommendation from Troy to finance committee was the lowest option in bringing forward. So that's what we brought forward to you. $10 increase, I believe, for athletics. And then just some kind of rightsizing, I would say, for some of the activities based on the comparisons.
Again, there's always scholarships available, and then we have this amazing connection piece with some of our other programs that are looking to support our families. Give and Go is one of those programs. So we have a good seamless approach, so those families in need or family needing additional funding supports for their kids can be involved, and we have that available to them. This will formally go through a hearing process next meeting in June. We'll have an opportunity for public comment before the board to vote on it, but that would occur in June.
And part of the finance committee discussion was to make sure that the communication is out there for the opportunities if there are income challenges, so families know how to access those dollars and what opportunities are there, whether it's Give and Go or something else.
I was thinking, when I was just looking at the appendix, it's a policy thing, in that paragraph, if we could add that sentence about scholarships. So we talk about you can't practice unless you paid your fee, but also if there was something we could add that says, here are the opportunities or a link to opportunities for that.
Very good idea.
That would be there.
We did have a, have a lengthy discussion about fees at finance committee, because the original documents that we reviewed along with, I believe, the student advisory council, activities advisory council, correct?
Yeah.
Was just reviewing what current fees are, looking at other district fees, and trying to make sure that we're, we're in alignment. And overall, I think some of our adjustments too were just getting programs in alignment. We had, you know, two jazz bands, but one paid a different price than, than the other for the activity fee. And so there was some, some good alignment being added to the fees that we currently have in place. And so we did discuss all that quite a bit.
Great. Thank you. So we are moving on to scheduled policy review. Regina? There you are.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So an overview of the policies up for discussion this evening. Student attendance, 503, and policy 509, student enrollment and assignment, both have new language added regarding a request for modified learning experience beyond the school day with an accompanying appendix with the form for making that request. Policy 527, student use and parking of motor vehicles is updated because we now have more parking spaces available for our upcoming school year. And we also have a different schedule with the elimination of zero hours. So there's some adjustments made to this policy, particularly in the appendix, and then will be made on the Edina High School website to move along with those changes.
So Regina, on that one, I noticed that all of the language about the priorities were canceled out. So where's the?
It's moved to the EHS website, which currently, right now, that site isn't live in accepting regi, or accepting parking fees because they're not open for the school year. But that is a decision that rests with the staff.
Okay, because right on here, it says that it appendix two, it gives the parking permit information, the costs, and then it says below is the parking prioritization plan for 17-18. But like I said, it's all-
Oh, that should probably be adjusted as well.
All been crossed off?
Yeah.
We'll adjust that.
It needs to be adjusted. It is, the intention, as I understand it, is that it will be moved online, and there's the hyperlink that's in the policy at the second bullet point that goes to that particular site. But thank you, yep, that's a good cleanup note.
Okay. And then my other question is, I know there's been some discussion around the langu, the prioritization, and there had been discussion around prioritization for non-resident students. And I was just wondering if you guys discussed that at all in committee, and if you got any feedback from the high school.
So the policy committee has not discussed that since the last time this was brought before the board, but I don't know, Rick, if you can give any update about discussion at the high school level.
Right, and they're going to drop that language. There won't be a preference, again, because of the extra parking, that we don't see that to be a concern.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so homeschool, 611, primary adjustment is in section nine B, new language about an application for shared time enrollment, which is an option that homeschool families have. And then appendix two provides the new form for making that application. We had a lot of discussion about policy 614 with the assessment plan. This has been in discussion at the policy committee for quite a long time. So glad to have it here for review and any kind of comments. And I don't know if, I just want to pause for a moment to see if anyone had comments or questions.
There weren't any changes on that. It was, there weren't any like red lines or?
Because it's new. Oh, right, yes. No, thank you, yes, that is correct.
Looking, usually the way the language-
It's new, it's like all one color and- Yes, and since this has never been adopted by the board-
Got it.
-it gets a single color.
Thank you.
However, when it gets back up on the review cycle, we will add more color. It's still in its black and white world right now.
Thank you.
Although it hasn't been a black and white discussion.
It's been colorful.
It's been colorful. But any comments on the policy that anyone would like us to take back to the committee before it moves to another step?
So, so maybe Regina, what would be helpful is to understand, so, once we pass this, what does implementation look like, and how do we think about that? Is it, is it for next year, or is it following year?
So I'm going to share-
Over time, or maybe ask them the question in person.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to pass it to Randy in a moment, but I do want to share one comment that I found very helpful as we've been discussing the policy. And I'm really certain that it was Randy who said this, so you can correct me if I misquote you. But it's, the what is the same, it's how we measure that will be realigned for personalized learning. That really helped me capture where this particular policy is moving. But Randy, can you add some more detail?
I'm sorry, Regina, can you repeat your question?
Oh, it, Randy's question. Just the intention for this policy in terms of how it will be implemented, and if this will happen in the upcoming school year.
For the personalized learning policy?
For assessment.
I'm sorry. I might ask Donna to jump in, she's a little bit more familiar with the assessment work through the assessment committee.
Okay, so, you're right, this is the what? It's establishing the committee. And so then from here, we will, we will always have this advisory committee working with us as a district to build our assessment plan. So it's really about just establishing that we will have a policy around how our assessment plan is reviewed, and how recommendations are coming up with teacher voice included, and then brought here for final approval.
So this really is ensuring alignment.
Yep.
I mean, the amount of assessment work that, it's just evolved, that we do need to make sure that we have strong alignment around the work, and so that the assessment work that we're doing does have purpose. And so this really does help frame that for us. And we now will have a very active advisory team who will be well-informed, and they've, it's a team that's made a commitment to learn and understand assessment, and will then help be us to be more purposeful in bringing this assessment information alive. I think the other step in this that's going to happen as we bring this data dashboard forward, that's going to push that information much more close to where the learning is occurring. Where students are going to get the feedback earlier, where teachers are going to see it more completely, and where parents are going to see it more completely. So this really helps just in all the work we're doing around how we make sure we know kids are learning, and how we can make sure if kids aren't learning, what do we need to do? And if they need to learn, if they have an opportunity to learn more quickly, we can do that as well. So this really does provide that foundation block that we've informally had in place, but this formalizes the process.
And would a committee like this work on standardizing, say, rules for reassessment or general practices across the district so that you don't have some teachers doing it one way versus teachers doing it another way? So for example, if you read, you know, you get, you don't get a high enough grade on a test, so you're going to retake it, but one teacher knocks you down and doesn't allow you to get to a certain level, whereas another one does. I'm just wondering if, is, is that the type of work we're going to do so we get some standardization?
I think actually that work, Sarah, shows up in multiple places, and needs to show up in multiple places. It could be the grading practices work of that policy. I think it's also, the intent is to have that addressed in the personalized learning policy, which is still under development. Because really, the goal is to keep learning as a constant. So if we keep learning as a constant and make time a variable, then we want to make sure that we're providing every opportunity for students to have the opportunity to learn and demonstrate that learning, and realize that that absolutely does take some students longer and some students less time. And so our work as a district needs to reflect that.
Thank you.
Just got a question, if I can, regarding parent and community input to the community, to the, to the committee. And this might be for you, Randy, or for Regina, but the, the policy is drafted to state as necessary, the administration will seek input from multiple parent and community stakeholders. And both the as necessary and the administration both strike me as not, not knowing what that means. So maybe you could just clarify, what is the intention in terms of how the committee would look for input from, from broader sources?
And I'll speak to that just briefly, because that was a point that was discussed at the committee level. And part of what we were wrestling with on that is what's appropriate as a standing committee? So for some types of questions, it may not be necessary that the same stakeholders be a part of that committee on a permanent basis, but they may, their expertise is very likely necessary on something in particular. So it was just trying to make sure that the policy language provided some flexibility based on how it may roll out. But Donna, you may be able to add some good background.
I think that's, that's right, Regina. I think we do want to be very transparent when we roll out anything new, especially assessments. And so making sure that we are in communication with people most affected by assessment changes is in part what we're trying to do, by, by including stakeholders as necessary.
And then is it, is it the committee that's making that determination, or administration? Since the, the policy says it's administration.
Yeah.
A lot of times committees make recommendations to the administration, and the administration's accountable to respond to that.
I do have the note down, thank you, because we can take that back and-
Yep.
-have some more discussion about that particular point.
So I have a quick question, and this was page 129 that I read, but-
Okay.
This policy appears to assume that there is a definition of district assessment plan. And so it kind of just goes on as if there's a definition somewhere, but there really isn't. And so it talks about these things that happen within it and what it'll include, but I would just go back and look and see if there's a definition that guides from the beginning, and then the rest would flow a little more easily, for me at least. That's good.
Thank you. Yeah, I have that down as well. Other notes?
So I think the lack of clarity we're having on understanding this is also going to confuse other people who read this. So are these, is this focused on state assessment or district-wide assessments only, or is it focused on the end-of-semester math test as well?
Donna?
That's where I was confused. So this is focused on balanced approach to assessment for the district. So it's a district assessment plan that looks at having us be able to consider standardized assessments, as well as common assessments that we might be doing at various sites, looking at other methods of assessment to illuminate quality evidence of learning, and growing that portion of the assessment plan, because we know that we have lots of really good quality learning going on that we don't always get to see in one performance assessment. So really, that's, that's what this is. As far as end-of, you know, quarter math tests, those things will still happen as a part of grading and learning. But this assessment plan would allow us to really grow our assessments to be more, much more balanced, and have a way to show our community quality evidence of learning in multiple ways.
Little background I uncovered just in reviewing the policy. I've forgotten that two years ago, we did move to rescind policy 614, which was titled "The School District Testing Plan." So it was language that we had in our policy composite for many years. It's no longer required by state statute, which is why we rescinded it. But taking a look at this, the language in this new policy really does, it's a paradigm shift. It's a completely different approach to what do we mean by assessment, what's the value of assessment? And just the two different titles, a testing plan versus a review of assessment, moves in that direction of alignment with the next-generation strategic plan.
Yeah, I think Lenny probably got it as close. I mean, I think to do a little more definition around the plan-
Yep.
-I think will really help staff, community, students, and the board.
It's all helpful.
And then one final comment, is it realistic the first time to get this, to get everything through within a two-year review cycle, the first time through?
So part of why the two-year piece is in there is because when you set up large-scale assessments, they take usually two years to implement. And so that, that's what that refers to in terms of, you know, will we have a, everything we want in, in two years' time? No, it'll develop as we go. But when you implement or decide on doing a large-scale assessment, you really won't know how it's working if you don't give it some time. So that's the biannual review process.
Thanks, Donna.
Any other assessment notes?
713?
713, fewer notes from the review. We had a discussion about consistency of language with the policy between the body of the policy and the appendices. So most of the notes that you're looking at are a goal to align those two parts of the policy. But any questions that we should take back?
I actually asked Lisa about this earlier, just because I wanted to make sure I understood it. So the transportation routes, appendix one, that was already in there, we're just moving it up?
Correct, yes.
So none of that is new language? It was just all blue and underlined pretty?
There is new language regarding the review of bus stops.
Bus stops.
That particular language is new. The location of where it is placed within the context is also different. But what you're seeing as a different color-
Okay, so it is different from previous?
Correct.
Okay. Well, then, tell me, so then the, the, how far a student walks to get to the bus stop, is that new language?
No, that part is not.
Okay.
So, and, and I recognize that that's confusing, because the location of a lot of that language is different, and then within that, there is also some new language. So yes, that part, that is confusing just for the review.
I was just trying to make sure that I didn't think we were-
Yeah, that's a really good point.
Making new language that I wasn't aware of.
Part is new and part is not.
Okay.
It's the review process we're formalizing.
Okay.
G.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Yes, America's correct, it's, it's G. It's G, section G, appendix one, letter G.
Okay.
Is the part that is the new language.
Thank you.
Any other questions to take back before this one comes up again?
I was just curious, and this is probably more of the director to answer, but the one-eighth mile for K-5. I'm just wondering how as, especially since we're going to be talking about busing again in the fall, how we look at that, you know, if there's a particularly long block or is that just applied as a period, you know, end of story? Or do we make adjustments as appropriate? Because I know some of the feedback we would hear is, you know, the bus is stopping three times in one block type of thing. So I was just wondering.
So part of that, and Margot, I'm sure you're going to have a better answer than what I have. Part of that, though, is the reason for the G new language, is recognizing that, yes, there are reviews. So what you're bringing up, it does happen all the time. And the, we recognize that there is a need for language that allows the transportation department to take a look at that. But what else, what am I missing?
So it was part of the implementation plan. I'm sorry, Margot.
Because I think also we talked about sidewalks. If there's a, there's a street that doesn't have sidewalk, which is one that does, it might
That answers my question.
Yep. And so in the implementation plan, we determined that we want, that was one of the things we could do is possibly look at some more consistency as a district. So it's one of the things we're doing. And that'll be a phased process as well.
Okay.
Margot, anything else?
Answered very well. We're just looking at consistencies and we do get, our feedback has been to, while there are instances for unique exceptions, it also impacts our opportunity to be efficient and just trying to balance that. So I appreciate your work on policy committee to help us with that.
And Regina, I actually forgot to mention something on policy 509.
Foul it.
I can scroll up. Yes.
I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
In the red section, it would be Roman numeral nine, the request for modified learning experience. The way it's described, I wasn't quite sure what this meant, particularly when we get into the bullet points, the student's desire for performance acceleration, extended family travel, unique learning challenges. I wasn't sure, like, are we playing in the world of, you know, acceleration in terms of, you know, GT? Or is this really about, because I thought this was more about learning opportunities outside of the traditional school day. So I just thought maybe some of the language there might confuse a parent as to what this policy is about.
So request for clarification
Yes.
On that section?
Yeah. Because when I read it, I started to think, oh, wait, I thought this was more about this versus that. So I don't know, maybe the performance acceleration, things like that, I'm not sure if that's what we're going after. Or if I'm misinterpreting
I'm not individually sure of that answer and that, but we can get some more, we can just have some more discussion and seek more information
Excellent, thank you.
On that because it could be applied more than one way.
Right.
And I, my guess
Right.
Based on the conversation that we've had on the policy is we know that there are many different types of experiences.
It's been the practice informally at sites, this is how it's done. We're trying to formalize it so it isn't like you have to know your way if it's, so but we need to do some clarification, I would agree. But this really is intended to say that a student who has a deep passion for figure skating is going on a three-week trip.
That's what I thought it was about.
That's the intent, or whatever performance area or an extended, how we work with that. And then what are the requirements to stay an Edina student?
Got it.
So that's our intent, so we'll just work on that a little bit more.
Thank you. Thank you, Regina.
Okay, you're welcome.
All right. No other questions? We are moving on to action items. Can I get a motion to approve the master agreement with Education Minnesota Edina for 2017-18 and 2018-19?
So moved. Second.
Gwen, do you have background for us?
Yes, I do, thank you. I'm very pleased to say that we had a very collaborative session with the Education Minnesota Edina group, and we are ready to bring it forward to the board. The teachers are very excited, as well as the district team is very excited to have worked with the group. So what's encompassed in this particular agreement for the next two years is that there's a two-year, 2% increase for year one and a 2% increase for year two. Health insurance increase by the district will be 1% year one and 2% year two. And for the first time ever, we're going to have a committee, a task force next year, look at the possibility of adding our early childhood family education teachers onto the salary contract so there's more uniformity in the early childhood program. And then our social workers who have achieved national certification will receive a $2,000 increase each year. For the salary schedules in the back of the contract, which include our athletics and our music and our leadership stipends, there's also a 2% increase each year as well. And the other thing that is a major change in this particular contract is for many years, I really have not been able to figure out how long disaster leave has been in place. But for the first time ever, the teachers are going to put their own sick leave time together into a sick leave pool, and then it will be operated by teachers. And so this, all, this whole package is within the guidelines that were approved by you earlier in the year, and I ask for your approval.
Gwen, I just want to commend your team and Tom Connell, the current president of the EME, on accomplishing this before the end of the current contract, which has been unheard of for so long. So kudos to all of you.
It was a great team to work with, would you say, Michael?
Congratulations all around. Great collaboration.
Absolutely. And I know Tom's not here, but
All right, any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next, I need a motion to approve the modifications to the guidebook of professional employment for classified supervisors, confidential employees, and other support staff.
Second.
Gwen, you're back.
Yes, I am back. Sorry for my voice, but
Please, this is your last
Again, we had, again, we had great collaboration with this particular team as well. And the salary increases are 2.5% for year one and 2.5% for year two. And their tax-deferred savings plan contributions have been 0.5% in years past, and it passed, and it will increase to 1% of one's base salary beginning year one. And then the, there is a zero increase in health insurance benefits from the district to individuals for year one, but there's a 2% increase in year two. And over the years, there has been various amounts given for snow removal, and the coordination for the snow removal, there will be a stipend. And that stipend is in the amount of $7,000. We did some figuring and averaging over the years and felt that that was a, all parties felt that was a fair amount, amount to give for the year. And then the staff will now be able to use four days for personal leave. That is not an increase in their basic leave, but they will be able to use four of those days for personal leave business, as we do with some of the other marketing groups. Again, this is within the total packet, the total package is within what was approved by the board earlier. So any questions?
Just on the, on the action statement, it actually says a stipend of $6,000.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Just a small typo, yes.
Got it, okay.
But in the body of the contract, it does say $7,000. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next, can I get a motion to adopt a resolution placing the three listed teachers on unrequested leave of absence?
So moved. Second. Roll call.
Not yet. First, Gwen gives a little background, then we'll go to roll call.
Yes, I'll just make it very brief. Unfortunately, we do not have enough positions some years, and this is one of the cases where these are tenured teachers, but we do not have enough positions throughout the district K-12 for them. And so they will be placed on unrequested leave. And as time goes on, we will keep these teachers in mind so if there is an opportunity within their licensed area that we're able to bring them back on, we will do so.
Any questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Next, can I get a motion to approve the purchase of a three-year subscription to Mastery Connect?
So moved. Second.
Steve, you're up.
Good evening, board. As part of our toolbox that we call Edina Apps, one of our foundational tools is the ability to do standards tracking and do assessment, common assessments or assessments that are delivered by the teachers. We, our current vendor of the three-year contract was up, so we did an RFP. We had five respondents that RSP, they're evaluated on cost, feature set, ease of transition and relationship with the district. Based on our findings, we're recommending Mastery Connect, which is our current vendor as well. And just a little background, it's been a great opportunity now that we've got infinite campus and Schoology in place as to, that was a pretty big move by the district to get those two implemented. And now we're really starting to dig in as an organization and the teachers to make sure products like Mastery Connect is integrated in that ecosystem and is being used with some reliability and some, coming up with some loose and tights with the teaching and learning department. And that'll be our big plan over the summer and as we continue into next year.
Any questions?
Steve, I'm unclear on, looking at the agreement, what level of training is included? Is there additional training needed on behalf of our staff? It's just not clear to me how this is written, what that means.
Thank you. When we did the RFP, we asked just specifically for the price, but then we also asked what it would cost for optional professional development if the organization chose to purchase it. So what we have here is if we wanted additional training, they put together a proposal for training that if the district elected to it, would cost $14,000 to purchase. We're not going to purchase all that training right now, but we will look, and now we have a menu, if you will, if we're looking for professional development, what it will cost from this vendor if we want to bring them in.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, they need a motion to approve the three-year subscription to Microsoft Enrollment for Education Solutions.
So moved. Second.
Kind of a little slow tonight, people. Steve, you're up again.
And it's such captivating topic.
It's not you, Steve, it really isn't.
So as you all are probably aware with the recent events that happened around the world where computers were infected with a virus, it's really critical as an organization that we keep our operating systems patched and up to date, that we have virus protection on our software. And this allows us to do that. This is, part of the subscription to Microsoft allows us to keep current on operating systems, have a virus protection on our software, have an email system that is protected by Microsoft and top-grade technology. I'm happy to report that there's been no incidence of the WannaCry virus in Edina public schools, and I think that's a testament to my department and just a couple of incredible folks, Adam Duffy, Bruce Coles, who are in charge of kind of making sure that those things are patched and kept up to date. And so they worked over the weekend, and this, proving this will allow us to continue using those tools for the next three years to make sure we're safe.
So Steve, are we upgrading what we currently have, or are we just staying current what we've bought previously?
That's a great question. So what this, we, it's a big, it's somewhat of a change. And so instead of buying software and just having the software, what we do is license the right to upgrade the software when we feel like we have capacity to do so or warrant it. And so this will allow us to slowly upgrade our computers. This summer, our plan is, is the laptop computers will go from Windows 8 to Windows 10, and then throughout next year, we'll be upgrading our desktop computers from Windows 7 to Windows 10. So this allows us the ability to, when the organization has tested the software, ensure for compatibility that we can slowly upgrade. So your answer, Randy, is yes, this will allow us to upgrade, but at our schedule and our timeframe.
And is the annual cost roughly comparable to what we've been paying in the past on a per desktop unit or laptop unit?
The price hasn't increased since, for three years. And so it's been an annual price for over three years. It's based on FTE, staff FTE. And so when we switched to this model about four years ago, I did the analysis, and what we were paying just for email servers and for virus protection was more, and management of computers was $10, $14,000 more than the licensed software of this. And so this has been saving us about $14,000 a year by going this route.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor of approving the purchase of the three-year subscription to Microsoft Enrollment for Education Solutions, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have scheduled review of policies. Can I get a motion to consolidate the approval of policies 709, 808, 810, and 912?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, they're consolidated. Can I get a motion to approve the consolidated policies 709, 808, 810, and 912?
So moved. Second.
Regina, you're up again.
We do not have changes since we've looked at these at our last meeting.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving 709, 808, 810, and 912, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. We are on to information announcements.
I would just remind the board that we have a board meeting on May 22nd, also June 5th, and we'll accept the graduating class of 2017. A regular board meeting is June 12th. We likely will have a work session prior to that as we'll be getting the results from the community survey. But also wondering if board members could look at their calendars for June 10th, we can go offline, but that's a Saturday morning. Just again, trying to find that retreat time. So we'll just have to see what, if that's a possibility. So working on that. Again, we are doing a lot of transition at the leadership level. I want to thank the board for their support with John Schultz coming in, as well as Annie Beaton will be identifying the new Concord principal in the near future, as well as the assistant principal at the high school. Transition plans are being built for all of those key positions. And thanks to the lead team here, as well as site principals for their support as we move this transition that's going very smoothly and very seamlessly. But that would conclude my leadership update.
Couple of recognitions of staff. Derek Lidstone, CES Recreation Leader, Kids Club Primary, got an email from parents about how great a job he was doing. And Howley Matheson and Karen Bergman for IEP work. Those are a couple of recognitions. We always recognize and appreciate all of our staff. Does anybody have anything else? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.